Good evening. My name is Ned Coe. I'm supervisor in Modoc County and I welcome you along with our sheriff for this informational meeting tonight. I do have a couple of formalities that I need to go through because this is a workshop for our Board of Supervisors so that all could be present tonight. So at this point, I call the workshop for February 25th, 2025 to order. And I need to go through a couple of quick items on it. First item will be discussion information. There'll be further introductions of our speakers, but at this point, I would like to introduce Modoc County Cattlemen's President, Jesse Harris, Fish and Wildlife Biologist, Kent Lawden, also from California Fish and Wildlife, the Wolf Coordinator, Axel Honeycutt, Russ Turner, Wildlife Services Technician. Lost my place on here. Mike Costello with the organization Howl for Wildlife and Senior District Representative for Congressman LaMafa's Office, Aaron Ryan. Second item is our discussion that we will be having this evening. I'd like to also make a couple of other quick introductions from the Modoc Board of Supervisors. Casey Cockrell Supervisor, Shane Starr, and I believe Kathy Rhodes is here. There, I see your hand back there. Thank you. And Supervisor Jerry Byrne was unable to join us tonight because she is on her way to Washington DC right now to have legislative appointments, visits coming up. We also have, and I'm sure I will miss some of you, but Aaron Alba Supervisor from Lassen County, possibly some Commissioners from Lake County in Oregon were going to try and join us tonight. I would like to introduce California Cattlemen's President, Rick Roberti from Loyleton who has come up tonight. We've got several additional folks from the California Fish and Wildlife that have also joined us and that are in the audience. John Perrine, Wildlife Supervisor for Trinity, Shasta, and Hama Counties, but he also is the Supervisor for the Wolf Biologist in the North State, one of which is Kent Leibel, who's based out of Chico as a Wolf Specialist. And Kent Lawden is another North State Wolf Specialist and he's on our panel tonight. So at this point, I will turn it over to Sheriff and have him welcome you also.
Good evening. I also wanted to welcome you to this meeting. I believe it's going to be the first of many meetings on this discussion about this wolf population in Modoc and our surrounding counties. My name is Tex Doughty. I'm the Modoc County Sheriff. Before we get started tonight, I just got a few housekeeping things to go over. Our hope tonight is to address your concerns and to come up with some solutions to this ever-evolving wolf issue within our county and how it affects us. I want you to keep in mind as we listen to these presenters tonight that they are not policymakers and they can't make any decisions about the wolf populations in our county. That's where our legislators. They are here to educate us on the wolves, the laws associated with the wolves, and to give us some ideas on the next steps to protect our livestock, wildlife, and our community as well. We ask you to hold all your questions until the end of the meeting as some of your questions may be answered through these presentations. There will be an opportunity towards the end of the meeting for questions and answers. If you have any questions, you will be asked to come to the front of the room so that everyone can hear your question and the response as well. You will be allowed three minutes per person for questions. Finally, there is some positive things happening at the federal level. What we do know is currently Congressman LaMafa's Office is involved in this. They're pushing really hard to get the wolves declassified at the federal level, which is a phenomenal start for us. I believe that the fight at the state level is going to be much tougher. I also had a meeting this week with Assemblywoman Hadwick, Heather Hadwick, and she's currently working on requesting $100 million over the next two years to sustain and expand the Wolf Livestock Compensation Program. So that's all positive news. With that, I want to introduce our first presenter, Jesse Harris, President of the Modoc County Cattlemen's Association.
My name is Jesse Harris, Modoc County Cattlemen's President. We all know why we're here tonight. These wolves, they're here and they're not leaving. What can we do as cattle producers survive? Modoc County is not an easiest place to live in the world. It seems that it's either too dry, too wet, too hot, too cold. That being said, keeping our cattle healthy can be challenging to say the least. Now, on top of all, we have to do is this dilemma. We at the Modoc County Cattlemen's consider this to be a serious issue. We believe that if these wolves move onto a certain producer, they could potentially put him out of business. At the very least, we think that wolves causing the damage need to be dealt with. I don't know how to get to this point, but the Cattlemen are willing to work with all of you here and everyone to make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. At this point, I would like to introduce Kent Lawden, Fish and Wildlife Wolf Biologist. Welcome to Modoc, Kent.
Thank you. And hello, very large crowd. Obviously, this is a little bit nerve-wracking for me, so please bear with me. Just to say some things that might not be obvious and to show you my heart. I've been a wolf biologist for 28 years in Idaho, Montana, Arizona, New Mexico, now here in California. It's been a heck of a journey. And a lot of people might not realize this, that a wolf biologist means you also work a lot with people the whole time. And so that part, both parts, the wolves and the people, have been a heck of an education for me. I want to share this with you. I am definitely pro ranching, 100% support family ranches. It's important to keep people on the landscape for a whole bunch of reasons. The way I look at it, working landscapes are really critical to support wildlife and wildlife habitat. And often, that's not how it gets played in the media all the time, which is unfortunate. But I try to carry that water everywhere I go. Anyway, just to say all that stuff, and then I've been a wolf biologist in California for seven years now, almost eight years. California, as you know, is quite a different place than the rest of the United States or what I'm used to. And you know, so what that looks like is me, again, coming to these places. I don't know anybody. I don't have family here. But through my job, I have met a lot of folks in the ag industry, maybe even most of the folks I know in Lassen, Siskiyou Counties, and a little bit Sierra Counties still, and Plumas County, Rick is here. And so I can tell you amazingly, this probably isn't understood by a lot of people too, that the people in the agriculture in the North State have been very kind to me, and I really appreciate that. I am a state employee, which means I work for the people of California. You know, so the department is to manage the public trust for the people, and that's what I do. In my case, it's to do the wolf manager. Of course, we are all have boundaries on us with all the laws, regulations, policies. They affect what we can and can't do, and it's pretty limiting here in California. One of the things I do then, of course, is I am responsible for knowing everything there is about the wolf population itself. The other part is the whole people part and trying to share that information with individuals as it is necessary. My day, during the day, every day with the radio collared wolves, text messages go out to producers so they have a general idea of where wolves are. And to help them with that, if we have a cluster of locations at several points in a spot indicating that, especially during the nighttime, that there could be something dead there, especially in a place like a livestock interest, private property, cattle pastures, that's a personal phone call from me to those folks. And you know, so it says something like, hey, just so you know, I got a cluster here. I think you might have something dead there that you might want to check out. Sometimes they already know, oh yeah, that's an old cow that we had to euthanize. Sometimes they don't know and they go out, check it out, and they go, yeah, looks suspicious. And then we'll come in with an investigation, either CDFW or Wildlife Services, or sometimes like Siskiyou County, it's the county trappers themselves that do the investigation. And that, of course, is an important step for the whole compensation program, which pays out for confirmed and probable determinations. Thank you. Help me out. What else should I? I'm trying to keep it short so that there's plenty of time for questions afterwards. Anything else you want to prompt me? Current status right now in Modoc County or the state? Modoc County, oh, I should go through that. So we have, as probably everybody in this room knows, we have, I'll say it like this, a rotting vandoe of wolves from the Whale Backpack in Siskiyou County. It's four to five wolves. The first depredation that they were tagged on, and this is sort of through DNA, they do not have a radio collar. All three radio collars of the Whale Backpack are still back over there in their regular territory, which I should say this, it's about 700 square miles, just to give you an idea of what a wolf territory can be. Still, December 23rd, they killed 700 pound yearling. Three wolves popped in the DNA. It gets tough because there's a mixture of individuals and it gets, because of that mixture, it's impossible to get all of the individuals there. But, excuse me, two individuals popped in there. One known as 31, male, and 28, female. He's black, she's gray. Then we had a depredation of, I think, a 300 pound calf in Parker Creek. And that was, again, 31M was there. And let's see here, 20M, male, and 22, male. Those last two are gray. 31 was the same wolf as was in the other one, the previous one, and he is black. The producer there saw four to five wolves, one black, the rest were gray. And then we had another depredation of a couple of calves and a sheep on the 15th. And those same wolves, 31, 22, and 20, showed up in the DNA again. So that's all that we know about them. That was in Jess Valley. And because they're not radio collared, you know, there's no way that we could know where they are today. I don't know what a bunch of four to five wolves are doing. I suspect that they are not going to show up or set up shop here. We'll see what happens, though. We had another incident a few years ago with three wolves, again, from the Whale Backpack, depredated, injured, mortally injured yearling heifer in Ash Valley. And we know at least one of those kept going. He was later detected near Chester, California. Then he was detected again up here in Modoc County last spring. There's two wolves out there. I'm sure you all know about that. He was one of them. He has most recently been detected by DNA near, I forget, I keep getting this wrong, South of Bernie Mountain. So that's kind of the status of what we know here. You probably have all heard about OR 158 in Oregon. One of the things we do, because we are on a border state, is we coordinate with ODFW all the time about wolves that are either coming here that they know about or are wolves going up there that we know about, radio collared wolves, and try to understand as much as what's going on as possible. I did get kind of the download of OR 158. To talk to that, what I understand is he was in our state briefly. He was near the Whale Backed Wolves on the morning that they had made that kill on December 23rd, and he promptly went back up into California or Oregon after that. I understand that it's something, these might not be exactly the right numbers, but something like five confirmed depredations? Well, five confirmed and four probable, which is nine, is what I understand, in a 20-day period, which is obviously an awful lot. And I understand, ODFW too understands that this winter, been very cold, very wet, people are hustling as best they can to try to keep their calves alive. And then a wolf shows up and starts doing this. So people really have no room for more strife in their life at the time. That's about everything for an update right now. Does that cover it? Total packs, what we have right now is seven packs, of which five meet the criteria for breeding pair status. That's two adults and two pups that survived through the end of the year, December 31st of 2024. We have five other areas that are what we call areas of wolf activity. That's kind of, we know there's wolves there. We haven't figured out yet if they're setting up shop there. That's what that is. If they do set up shop, then you know, they'll be identified as a whole pack. And then that's about 50 wolves, minimum count, 50 wolves. Anything else? And of course, I'll be here, questions, and even afterwards, I'll be around. People can have my phone number. People can call me anytime. So hopefully, it doesn't end here. We just all keep talking.
Thank you, Kent. At this time, I would like to ask Axel Honeycutt, the California State Wolf Coordinator, to present.
Can you guys hear me? Oh, okay. Yeah, so I'm Axel. Thanks for having me here and appreciate being here. We have had a, I've had, I've been in this position for about just over a year now. We previously did not have a coordinator. We have a coordinator position now that we have wolves spread across the North State and even down across parts of the southern Sierra as well. And so as wolves continue to spread across the state, it means that we brought on several more staff, including Nate and another biologist down south in the Sierras, to do exactly what Kent's doing up here, to be local, to be able to be on the ground and help figure out what's going on. The one thing I'll say is that there's three, four of us in the state that work on wolves from CDFW side. And so folks on the ground here might be hearing those numbers and saying, hey, there's a lot more wolves than that. And to that, I'd say to you that we rely very heavily on you folks on the ground in terms of getting information. We can't be everywhere. We try to be. Kent, Nate, and I and all of us, we work, I think, pretty hard to try to do what we can to determine the populations and monitor the populations, but we do rely on you guys as well. And so we do welcome any information that you have that will help feed into the documentation and reports that I put together on the state side in terms of documenting the population. There's a few other things I wanted to say just in terms of, I mean, my job is, I am in the field with the guys and trying to help as much as possible more down south as we continue to have wolves spread further south in the Sierras. But my job is also to coordinate with Wildlife Services, California Farm Bureau, all the other organizations and nonprofits that come together to talk about wolves in one way or another. And some of that, or a large portion of that recently, or definitely last year, has culminated in trying to get more support for a compensation program. We did have a Wolf Livestock Compensation Program in 20, between 21 and 2023, we had a pilot program. And last year, in July, the state legislator allocated $600,000 to re-up that program. And so we currently do have a Wolf Livestock Compensation Program right now. It's completely voluntary. I understand that some people do not want to be involved in it, but I do want to let you know that that is a program that we have that is current. We do, at this time, compensate for any confirmed and probable losses, but that does mean that if you have a loss, it does have to go through an investigation. And I imagine Wildlife Services up here, I know Russ has been really great at helping and facilitate those, and CDFW will help wherever we can as well, but those do need to be documented. When we say that they're confirmed or probable, it has to go through the process in order for us to actually pay out. The way that that works is if you have a loss, there is an application online. We can also do a printout. You can also call me directly. I'm the one that actually processes the forms on our side, so feel free to reach out to me. I can leave my contact information if people need help or just need more information on it. Once it's gone through the process where we have a determination, that is the determination that says it's confirmed or probable, or the other ones, the other possibilities, if it's confirmed or probable, we need a fair market value statement of what the price per pound would have been for that animal. We don't pay out, say you lost a 200 pound calf, or sorry, 100 pound calf, we don't pay out for that weight. We pay out for the weight, the fair market value, at the weight in which you would have sold the animal. So we pay out. I know that that doesn't compensate for everything. I know that there, that doesn't compensate for the losses you would have had for reproduction of that animal in the future or sale of prodigy and whatnot. I understand it's not a perfect system, and we are trying to adjust it to work for everyone in the state as much as possible. This is the system that we do have, and I'm more than happy to work with any folks that have losses up here that are interested in that program. Just know that it's present and available to you. Other than that, I just wanted to say that coming up here from being based down in Sacramento, I'm here to listen to all the opinions and thoughts that folks have. I know there's a lot of feelings around this. And just know that, you know, I will continue to push that up through, share all of this with our leadership in California Department of Fish and Wildlife, especially as we continue to make decisions in the phases of wolf recovery change that are outlined in the management plan for wolves. Oh, and the one thing I just wanted to say is Kent mentioned the breeding pairs. Breeding pairs are really important because that is what actually quantifies change. It's not just a California thing. It's what's been done across the West and the Rockies in terms of where is the population. So the total number of wolves is, it's not that it's irrelevant, it's just that we use that metric of how many pairs are breeding in terms of change. So for the last two years, we've had a minimum of four breeding pairs in the state, and that qualifies, that means that we go from phase one to two. And so as we work within the legal framework that we have for wolves in the state, that is where we're moving through, and that is the main metric that we are looking for to track as we continue to change and see what other management steps are available to help folks out on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Axel. At this point, I'd like to introduce my near neighbor, Russ Turner, USDA Wildlife Services Technician. Thank you, Russ.
Hello, everyone. This is a phenomenal turnout. I see a lot of familiar faces and a lot of unfamiliar faces. I've heard there's folks coming down from Oregon, Siskiyou County. That's somebody here from Siskiyou County right there. Lassen, this is a hot topic. I've been busy the last two weeks, and we'll get into that here in a few. So thank you for having me and thank you for coming. Okay, my name is Russ Turner. I work for USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, Wildlife Services as a technician or a specialist commonly referred to as a trapper. Somebody says, hey, could you contact your local trapper? Well, in Modoc, that's me. My jurisdictional response area is Modoc. I guess the simplest way to describe what I do on a day-to-day basis or my counterparts, and I'll get into those folks here in a few, is to mitigate conflict between animals and people, to, in an attempt to mitigate damage of your property. When I say property, I mean your livestock, your land, your structures. It could be a direct loss of a depredation of livestock, maybe a wolf or a mountain lion coming in and killing a replacement heifer. Maybe it's as simple as you replanted your hayfields and you've got badgers coming in digging up squirrels. Maybe it's the stunk that gets under your house or keeps coming out on the porch and spraying your house pets or spraying underneath your house, and you're tired of that. You can call me if you want my services or my counterparts. We'll come out and try to help and mitigate that. We may also give suggestions on what you can do in the future to hopefully maybe deter So I'll go over the neighboring counties. South of us is Lassen County. George, George is here tonight. He is my counterpart for Lassen County. That is his response area. He is a USDA employee. To the west of us, Shasta, is John. He is a USDA employee also. So those guys have a wealth of knowledge and dealing with this specifically, a lot more experience dealing with the wolves. To be honest, the wolves are new to me and they have a lot of info there. And in Siskiyou County, there's two folks there. There is Dennis and Cody. They are not affiliated with USDA, but Siskiyou County has their own county-run program. And again, those guys are a wealth of knowledge and been dealing with the Whale Backpack, who is quite the notorious pack regarding depredations. So they're a wealth of knowledge. Those are my counterparts and the folks, when I have the questions or run into something, I call them. Again, they've been doing it a long time, a lot longer than myself. How to get ahold of my counterparts or myself, if you do not directly have my number or nor do you know someone who does, you can always call your county ag office, call the Farm Bureau. If it's in Modoc, speak with Bonnie. She'll give you my contact info and relay a message to me. And that goes for the other counties also. And I'll say this, if you have my info, and a lot of people here, I work their ranches, if somebody wants it, they have a conflict, they have something going on, even have questions, I mean, it could be anything from, hey, we need somebody to come out and remove these animals, or whatever that may be, or, hey, we've heard some rumors about the wolves, whatever that is, give out my info, please, give me a call. And I'll say this too. I live out in an area where the cell phone reception is not good. I have three numbers. I have a personal home phone, a personal cellphone, and a work phone. If it is an emergency, I cannot stress this enough, even talked to my counterparts, I said, hey, if it's one thing you wanted to stress and talk about tonight, this said, hey, if it's one thing you wanted to stress and talk about tonight, this is it. If you have an emergency such as potential wolf depredation or wolf activity, again, I cannot stress this enough, immediately report it. You can report it to CDFW and/or myself, and I'll get to why that's important. Is your pencil ready? We've spoke, you have my number, but I'll give it again. Area code 530, 708, 5353. Yes, you are welcome. Yes, so I'll just go over my role with the investigation. So if you're in Modoc County, you get ahold of me and you get immediate response. I immediately come out, this is what that's going to look like. We've never met, we're going to formally meet, you're going to show me what you have, maybe get some background or history to what's occurring. Hopefully that scene is not disturbed, but if it is, before I disturb it, I'm going to get out my cellphone, I'm going to take some video, snap some photos of the carcass, the surrounding areas, and, hold on, I'm going to get a drink, my mouth's getting dry. So we're at scene, I'm going to take photos of the carcass and the immediate area around it, and attempt to get a picture of the landscape, what that looks like, how that carcass is lying there, that's important. Photos and measurements of tracks, footprints, maybe pictures of scat, maybe we collect that for DNA. Then go over the outside of the carcass, looking for injuries to say that replacement heifer, looking for, some of the things we often see are bite marks, puncture holes, maybe there's a set from the canines, we're able to measure that and document that, looking for rake marks, areas that have been chewed on and eaten on. Upon skinning back that animal, we may be looking for bruising on the inside of the rake marks, on the inside of the skin, maybe it's the hemorrhaging. So all of those things are important when it comes to that wolf investigation being complete and whole, and potentially be reimbursed through the confirmed or probable, probable, correct? So upon my completion at scene of that investigation, I'm going to use CDF's template or form, it's a two-page report, I'm going to complete that. Any evidence that, maybe you've taken videos, photographs, and I will attach that to an email and forward to Kent. Now, CDFW ultimately determines the outcome of that investigation as far as the determination of what it was. Think of me as the collector of facts and information. I'm there to collect it, gather it up, package it up nice, send it off, and they make that determination. If I collect DNA, Kent, what he's done is he will forward me a mailing label and try to expedite that and get that DNA down to SAC at the lab. Then from there, when the DNA results come out, the lab gets ahold of Kent, and then Kent will relay that to me and then the rancher, and I, him or I will both even relay that to the rancher, and keep them up to date. So let's just say, I'm going to throw a curveball, let's just say, you call CDFW, you have suspected wolf depredation, you call me, hey, I'm out of town, I'm, to be honest, I've got an eight-year-old son, 11-year-old daughter, I'm chasing kids, doing, you know, doing that, there's times where I am unavailable, but if you call me, if I'm, even if I'm on vacation, I take my work phone, so I will field calls to get a, you know, alternate solution for you, hopefully is the plan. So if you call, you can do some of the same things I just talked about. Before disturbing the scene, grab your cellphone, document what you have, and maybe secure that carcass for evidence collection. You know, instead of leaving that carcass out overnight, maybe, preferably, I prefer you move it to a secure location, could be anything shop, garage shop, or your yard, cover it up with a tarp, try to keep all those scavengers off it, the predator from returning, the birds, so forth. And I'd also say, try to keep your domestic dogs away too, you know, for the DNA purposes, try not to cross contaminate there. So again, a quick overview on that, call your ag office if you don't have contact information for myself or our counterparts. Suspected wolf activity, immediately report it, and then if need be, secure, secure that carcass and that evidence. And another thing on securing the evidence, we get a lot of, I get a lot of photos sent to me, and, hey, what's this track, so forth. Something I think that's to know is, put something down next to it. I mean, I know everybody's not running around with a tape measure and a ruler like I am, but put down a dollar bill, your knife, something in comparison to that track, so there's some perspective there, just something to think about. Okay, now I'll move on to what USDA offers with the non-lethal program regarding wolf activity. State of California has two dedicated personnel. I'll start with Larry. He, his official title is a range rider. Essentially what Larry's job would consist of is loading up his horse or horses into his horse trailer, traveling to an area where there's wolf activity, and this is obviously pre-planned, getting him signed up for the program and so forth, on a five-year contract is our agreement. He'll ride his horse through those cattle in that area in hopes of deterring that wolf from either coming in and, you know, depredating right then, or even coming in and causing that stress of that wolf revens cattle. So that's the goal. And the other is Bill. Larry's back there in the back, Bill's here too, also there's Bill, another USDA employee. What Bill does, he's going to meet with the rancher where there's been wolf conflicts. Bill will come up with a game plan with them, and he will go in and they will figure out a designated area to set up flagry to protect a designated group of livestock. That flagry is going to consist of a single strand of wire and a flagry hanging down that is powered by solar. Bill will also set up fox lights, essentially strobe lights that are motion-activated, is that correct, Bill? Okay. And like a sound machine or a sound box to emit sound in an attempt to deter. So that's, that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Russ. I would like to draw your attention to the table over here that there are a fact sheet, there's about 50 copies of it, so share them around. We had no idea whether we were going to get 550 or 500 people here tonight. This is put together by University of California, our firm advisor, Laura Snell. Unfortunately, Laura was not able to be here with a previous commitment for tonight. But it also kind of itemizes what Russ just talked about on dealing with the crime scene of a potential wolf kill. And I can't stress enough the protection of it, especially from your ranch dogs. Also, with snow on the ground, watch where you're stepping. The least number of steps that you put around there, the better opportunity that they have to confirm a wolf kill at that point. Protect some of those footprints that you may see with a bucket or a dish over the top of them. During the day, if Russ says he's going to be out there in two hours, we know how quickly the scavengers, particularly the ravens and the other flying scavengers up here on the scene, lay a tarp over it so that it protects it a little bit. This is all spelled out on there, it also has a whole list of phone numbers, including Russ's, on there. Please help yourself to those. So at this time, I would like to introduce Mike Costello with Howl for Wildlife.
Thank you. Wow, this is amazing. And I just want to set the record straight, Howl for Wildlife, while we sound like a pro-wolf advocacy group, we're pro-hunting, and we believe that all wildlife management should be done through regulated hunting, including predators, that's the best mechanism there Our background is, we're a new advocacy group in the conservation space. I'm down in Sacramento, our founder is actually down south of San Francisco, we got a guy in Arizona, Montana, Utah, and Colorado. So we're all over the West. We focus on effective advocacy. And what that means is developing the right messaging and getting to the right people that are deciding something when they are deciding it. A lot of people say, you know, contact your electeds, you know, if something's in the Senate committee, contacting your elected may not actually have any effect because there's nine people in the Senate committee that are actually looking at an issue. Or contact your electeds, you know, if it's in the commission, Fish and Game Commission, contacting the elected's office won't do anything because the commission's looking at it. So one of the biggest things that we do is we help educate and identify where is this issue, and how do we start to get the right messaging to decision-makers? Last year, we were deeply involved in Colorado, just to have some street cred here, we were deeply involved in the fight in Colorado to protect mountain lion hunting. Based on the wolf reintroduction vote, which is a ballot box biology issue in 2020, people assumed that mountain lion hunting would be taken away through ballot box biology. And we ended up winning in that by getting a no vote on Prop 127 in Colorado by a 10-point margin, which means there's about 1.7 million people in Colorado that voted to support mountain lion hunting with hounds and bobcat hunting and trapping in Colorado, which is a fairly, just, you know, if there's a political divide, I'd say it's a more liberal state like California. But people said science-based wildlife management works. And so even though there's only a couple thousand mountain lion hunters there, 1.7 million people said, go do this because it's how ecosystems should be managed. So we were deeply involved in the messaging in that. And I bring that up because I think, you know, people don't roll out of bed each morning saying, gosh, I just wish my neighbor would stop hunting mountain lions. Like, people are busy, right? And similarly, people don't roll out of bed every morning saying, oh, yeah, those people in Modoc County, screw them, they should have to deal with wolves. Like, they just don't think about it. And so, but they do get messaging from other agenda-driven organizations that paint a picture that the wolf, you know, has a unicorn, has a unicorn horn and pees rainbows and all these things. And so people have this vision of what wolves are, and it's not the real vision. And so ultimately, we in this room are going to have to convince people that are not us to support lethal removal of wolves. And we're going to have to get people who are not us to tell their electeds and tell the commission and inspire the department to move forward on a management plan when the numbers say that it's the right thing to do, to get involved with real wolf management solutions that we see in Idaho, in Montana, in Wyoming. Now, people will say, oh, they're just trying to eradicate all the wolves, they're trying to exterminate all the wolves. That's not true. Montana, Wyoming, Idaho, those fish and game departments have very proactive wolf management plans. Their goal is not to eliminate wolves. They like wolves on the landscape, they like wolves in wild ecosystems where they belong, living with prey species that are abundant. We don't have abundant prey species, that's a problem. But the bottom line is that we can get to a point, we need to get to a point where the average consumer of information doesn't think we're trying to exterminate the wolves. And the other thing I want to say, well, there's a lot I want to say, I'm going to ramble, you know, the idea of coexistence, because words mean things. People say, coexistence, 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 I say that's BS. We are being forced to cohabitate with wolves. And that is a, that is a word I would like you to take out of here. Whenever somebody says, oh, you need to coexist, it's like, coexistence is wolves over there in the wilderness and us over here with our land and our livestock. That's coexistence. Wolves in the pasture eating our livestock is cohabitation, and that's not acceptable. And we need to parse that out and differentiate it. Coexistence is a very charismatic, lovely, Disney-esque fiction that is used to paint a picture for consumers of information in the Bay Area or LA, say, oh, yeah, we need to coexist. They don't think about it beyond that. And so we need to figure out what are the, what are the words that we're going to use to talk about and pierce this bubble, pierce this shield that they've got that's very charismatic. So we need to, we need to identify that we're, we shouldn't be forced to cohabitate with wolves. Coexistence would be great, but that's not what's happening right now. So what can we do right now? Because they are a federally listed endangered species. You know, so who do we need to be mad at? I think that's something I get a lot, is, you know, people jump on Facebook and we're mad at the department, we're mad at Axel. Like, it's not Axel's fault, he didn't make the law. And not only is it a federal law, there's a state law. So we've got two layers of regulations that have even the department's hands tied. So we need to get the federal delisting removed. And right now, there is legislation, we're going to hear more about it, there is legislation in Washington to delist wolves nationally without judicial review, so some judge in San Francisco can't roll that back. We need to get that supported. Now, that means that we have to have 60 senators voting for it, which probably means we need two California senators voting for that. So the stories of Modoc County and Lassen and Plumas and Sierra and Siski County need to get down to our electeds, our senators, to vote yes on this delisting thing. That's going to be critical. So think about the messaging that's going to convince them to support that so that then California can own the path forward and decide what's going to happen. And at that point, it's again back to the department and the commission. You know, there is a wolf management plan. I didn't really know how deep it went until about two months ago. When you've got time to scroll through 300 pages of information, I encourage you to read it. There's a lot in there, and from my view, due respect, there's a lot that's not being done. So I would say, that's 10 years old, we need to motivate and inspire the department, and it's not Axel, it's the director to start with. We need to motivate and inspire Chuck Bonham to say, we need to revisit this plan, it's 10 years old, or it's coming up on 10 years old, let's start working on that now so that we are ready to do something when we hit these population benchmarks. And that's what this meeting's going to be good for. Because this meeting shows the people in Sacramento that there's a serious problem, and they have, they have people, families, businesses who really, really want to see some action. The last time a meeting like this came up that I went to was Eldorado County, they're dealing with probably 200 depredations last year with mountain lions in their county. They had a meeting like this, and they actually have seen some traction with the department on getting movement there. So on messaging, chute shovel shut up. Who loves to say that? I hear you, I know you, I know you. Look, I get it, I totally get it, and it happens. Two things about chute shovel shut up. One, when you say that out loud in a public forum like Facebook or Instagram, you are making the slogan for the pro-wolf advocates. You're writing their propaganda, you're writing their rhetoric. They will take that and they will package it up in a nice little box and walk it down to Contra Costa County and Marin County and say, look, those heathens up there just want to kill all the wolves. And so be really strategic, I don't care that you feel that way, be strategic in where you want to go and who you, and how you need to influence minds and hearts and souls and votes. So that is the worst thing we as a community can say if we want to actually make progress with convincing people that we want to have a vibrant ecosystem with wolves and livestock can live amongst it without being depredated on. Because the SSS just says we want to kill them. And that doesn't fly. It might fly here, but it doesn't fly with decision-makers, and it doesn't fly with the voters who are not us, but there are more of them. And so we have to think strategically, what is the messaging that we can say? What are the value statements that we can bring forward that will convince people that have, you know, two jobs, three kids, a softball team to coach, and two dogs, you know, people that are busy? Like, what is the messaging that we can use to convince those people to say, gosh, maybe there's a middle ground? Maybe it's not us versus them, maybe it's not all or nothing, maybe there's a middle ground where... ground where coexistence of livestock, healthy, happy, wolves in the wilderness, where that can happen. We have to talk to those people strategically. The other thing about this is that if you kill, and I've used this about the mountain lion issue. There's a lot of mountain lions that get killed in California every year because they're in somebody's yard with goats and small ruminants and sheep and calves or burrows, llamas, whatever. There's a lot of mountain lions that get killed. Because the policies that we have, I believe, the depredation policies are completely ridiculous and unworkable. Like, the idea of two, three strikes, you're out thing with a mountain lion depredating on the same parcel, you know, within a given period of time is nuts, especially when you get into smaller parcels. So there's a lot of mountain lions that get killed. The problem, though, is losing the data point of that lion existing, doing something that's not supposed to be doing in your backyard, losing that data point makes the mountain lion foundation's policy look like it's working. When you do chute shovel shut up, it makes it look like the policies are working because you've solved the problem in that moment, but that data point was never captured. And so if we want to make traction moving forward, be really strategic in what you're saying and what you're doing, because we need to capture the data, we being all of California and the department, we need to capture the data that shows what the problem is, shows what the population is. So just think strategically on that. And finally, there's ways you can take action. I foresee a time where we will have, at HowForWildlife.org, and this is my pitch, my ad, you can go to our website, HowForWildlife.org. We have actions up right now regarding bringing back hounds to hunt bears. We have actions up right now to bring back hounds to pursue mountain lions in Eldorado County as a pilot. And I foresee that we will have an action up soon where to tell our electeds to support this delisting of wolves. And so taking action, it takes a minute or two. Be proactive, be engaged, and participate in the process as much as you're angry about things. Think strategically about what you're saying, and then bring this group back together again. I'd love to see, I'd love to see the whole, I'd love to see our two senators up here. You know, I'd love to see a bigger elected, I'd love to see Chuck Bonham up here. Because we need all of the electeds to see what's going on and how passionate you are and how concerned you are about what's happening. So thank you for bringing it all together here, and I'll answer questions when it's time.
Thank you, Mike. And at this point, I would like to introduce Erin Ryan. Erin and I worked way back when on that original wolf plan more than a decade ago. Yeah. So Erin is with Congressman Lamoff's office, and she's going to give us an update on the congressional legislation going on right now.
I'll be quick, because I'm the only thing standing between you and Q and A. And I get that. So back when Ned and I were attending the wolf meetings, we could not fill a room this big in any of our communities, which was super frustrating. Because people thought that it was going to work out. They were going to have a plan, and they were going to compensate, and wolves don't go near people, and wolves don't kill for sport, which they do. They don't kill to teach their young, which they do. And they're not going to kill your dog, they do. All these things have happened in other places. And in places where they collar the wolves, they become habituated to human contact, and they get even closer to people. And then they're not afraid. The people in Oregon, on a conference call I was just on last week, were talking about wolves that were, you know, some 50 yards out, and the guy shot over the thing's head, and it didn't even flinch. Obviously not afraid. So that's bad. To Mike's point, with the environmental community and some of the pushback, I was at the listing meeting over in Fortuna. You haven't lived till you've attended those. To start your day with an environmental activist not wearing pants with a wolf hat on in the parking lot? My God, things you can't unsee. Same woman did put on pants for the meeting and stood up there in front of God and humanity on C-SPAN, no less, with the actual commission sitting there, she was testifying. And she gets up and she said, "I'm just begging you," with her wolf hat and her little pockets at the bottom. I've got a picture of her, I checked the date, November 12, 2015. "I just beg you to list the wolf because I want my three-year-old to meet one in our It's like, holy crap, where's CPS when you need them? So I don't know how that worked out for the poor little rug rat, but his mother was obviously crazy. They don't get it. They don't get it, so they don't know what you're dealing with, what you're talking about. I've got some ranchers over in Siskiyou County that have lost 20 head. We knew this would happen, we knew this would happen over a decade ago. We knew this, we would be here talking about this with all of you because it was never going to work out. And not to throw my new BFF Axel under the bus, but I did ask him at the beginning, like, what's the goal? You know, like, when do we get to delist them from the state, right? How many is how many? Just in case somebody was going to ask that, beat you to it. There's no number because they haven't done that part yet, which is terrifying. And while Ned and I were sitting in those meetings, we knew, because no one was ever writing, there was nothing being written, there was a lot of discussion around this table about how it was going to work out, how it wasn't going to work out, how the wolves are super friendly, and how they're going to be just wild, and they're going to be out in the boonies, and blah, blah, blah. No one was really writing anything down. And suddenly, OR7 spends a tremendous amount of time in California because there were a ton of elk in the Doris area, and my phone was blowing up about all these elk. Well, oddly enough, elk attract wolves. So the wolves came over, OR7 specifically, and ultimately stayed there long enough to where they could do this listing. Well, now, suddenly, the wolf plan was done and sat in a big room like this up in Siskiyou County, and then here was the wolf plan that was written. Well, I was in all those meetings. We never once reviewed anything. Did we ever see anything written? Yeah, no. No things written. So I don't know how the state will ultimately handle this as far as the delisting. On the federal side, we're all in. So you can call my office all day long. I'm in Redding, by the way, and if you'd like to write down my number, I mean, I've got cards, I got cards, like, throw them out there. So my name is Erin, E-R-I-N, last name is Ryan, R-Y-A-N, and the number is 530-515-7135. And if you call the Redding office and you call anytime, well, call anytime, but if we're not there, my number's on the answering machine. So if somebody says they can't get ahold of us, they're either dumb or they're lying. So bottom line is, I'm very easy to find. But we're completely on the team, love to delist them. The trick is going to be the Senate. So you have to have 60 votes on the Senate side. So, you know, for all your friends that think, oh, the Republicans control the Senate, we'll be able to do it, you know, hop, skip, and a jump? Not so hop, skip, and a jump. But we're wily, you know, and we'll think of something. But Doug has been against the wolf thing since, before we were for the wolf thing in the state of California. So there's no convincing there, there's no corner to turn, no lobbying to be done in your own district. But I'll tell you, he's right about the senators, because we do need extra senators. And to get them to break with their party to help us on that 60 vote is going to be a heavy, heavy lift. But I was thinking about a little experiment as I was looking at how many of you there were. So I said to myself, self, I should save you all the phone call. And how about all of the people that are interested in delisting the wolves, if you would raise your hand, I could just send the picture to the congressman. And I got you. I already checked to see if I could get you all in. The end.
Thank you, Erin. And I do think that that is the critical first step, is getting the delisting to occur on the federal side. It doesn't get us out of our state listing, but it's a critical step moving forward. And to answer a question that was just shouted from the floor, I will be back on Friday night for the next week in Washington, DC, visiting with legislators, and this is one of the topics. Thank you, sir. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Tex.
Hey, real quick, a couple of things that's really important that we want to get the message out on this. Excuse me. Russ Turner was talking about, we were in communication a lot on all predators, and especially our lions and our wolves. And now starting to hear about the bears. With that being said, you can always call the sheriff's office. I want to know. My staff knows that I want to know about what's going on, because sometimes I'm left out of the loop when it comes to fishing game, and I want to know. So that allows me and Russ to communicate. If you can't remember Russ's number, you can always contact the sheriff's office and we'll provide it to you. So that's just one thing. The other thing you need to know, that's super important, Mike touched on it earlier, we have to take these reports, we have to know about it, we need that data. If we're going to get any change, we have to show what, how big this problem is. And we all recognize that it's a huge problem currently, but we have to be able to show them that evidence. We don't win a case in trial without having evidence. And that's extremely important to have that data. So just keep that in mind. I know it's an extra step for you guys, you guys are all, all of you folks are super busy out there on those ranches and taking care of your cattle this time of year. We got everything in. I have some real concerns, we've had a little bit of conversation about that prior, too. I have some concerns about the public safety side of things. You guys, many of you are bringing your livestock in close to homes so you can monitor your calving, take care of your calves, take care of your heifers and cows. We're just drawing the predator in closer. You know, I have some concerns about that. And eventually, we're going to, you know, we don't see a lot of cat attacks, we know very little about the wolves currently, but it's coming. And we want to be way ahead of that. So part of that is, get us the data, help us out with that if you do have a kill so that we can confirm it. You guys, hopefully, you'll be able to get reimbursed. I just talked about Assemblywoman Hadwick's office, they're working on getting you guys some more money in the interim to help you, you know, give you a little bit of relief on some of those losses. So just want to make that clear. At this point, we'll start taking questions. If you have a question, we'd like you to come to the front so we can, so everybody can hear. So Pat, please. You do.
Okay. Thank you all. And Mr. Lamoff, thank you, because he listens to us when nobody else in California does. Ladies and gentlemen, my father came here in 1888 with 10,000 head of Miller and Lux cattle for the Black Rock Desert and the military base they had bought over there. From 1888 to at least 1940, when I was a little kid, you didn't have but once in a while a great wolf. Okay, my question is, since you people put collars on them, don't any of you know how to track? And if you, and if you don't know how to track, then hire some of the local natives who do know how to track. But anyway, I'm sorry, I'm really disgusted. 20 years ago, you tried to bring wolves up here. Do you realize that when Mr. Carver taught our class in the seventh grade about what wolves do, especially through Europe, the next thing that's going to get killed, it's not going to be a calf or a sheep. They like to eat people. So you people better go to the mountains, find new people in Sacramento, and make them delist the wolf because they will start killing people.
Hey, I think one of the things that we need to ask for more from the department, and it's appropriate to ask for it, either through the department or through the commission, which is a public process, is more transparency. And that's something that, you know, I sense from this community and watching the conversations that are going on, is that there's a, we don't think there's enough transparency, we don't think there's enough trust. There's not trust probably on both sides of the deal. And the only way that trust gets built is by more conversation, more information, more data, more tracking, and showing what's happening. And so I just want to key off that tracking comment, because the data's there, and we need more data, but it needs to be shared in a timely manner. Thank you.
Real quick, too, I failed to do this at the beginning, I want to make it clear that Senator Megan Dally, her office was contacted and they wanted to be here. Prior commitment, you know, we put this meeting together pretty fast, they're in total support of what we're doing tonight. And again, Assemblywoman Hadwick's office, same thing, they had a prior commitment in Sacramento, they aren't able to be here tonight, but they are in total support of what we're doing here tonight, so.
I just got a couple of things to say, more statements than questions. For one, one of you gentlemen said something about one in particular wolf that had killed a few cows. Okay? I believe that that should be designated as something that should be put down. If you have a dog that attacks people all the time, what happens to that dog? Okay? My brother lived in Montana for 50 years. He had a herd of elk in his backyard. For about 20 years, they all did fantastic. And all of a sudden, a pack of wolves moved in. Every other day, there was an elk gone, no more elk. So stop and think about it, about these wolves. Don't care how much anybody loves them, but we got rid of them for one reason, and they should be gone again. That's just the way I feel.
Thank you, Dan.
We have a small ranch up here on Sioux Pass. We run about 200 mother cows. There about five years ago, we worked with fishing, and we hadn't come in, they collared three cougars. And we was under the impression that if those cougars come back across our place, well, we have like 5,000 acres that we have leased, or through that other area, they sort of let us know. So, you know, we've been working together. And we never did get a call. They come in, they collared them, like Pat was saying, you know, good will, you guys tracked them, you knew they were there. And if you let us know, we could go out, you know, not to go out and shoot them, but save our staff. You know, we say work together, but all the, I feel like I just do this to them. Oh, yeah, we'll do this, we'll do this, we'll do this, if you don't. If we can get on the same page, man, it'd be great.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, my name's Norman Perry, I've got some cattle up in Pine Creek. I have a question for you. Now, you're a program where you compensate for the damage, and you come out and look at it. But something I know on my cow herd, when I'm small, and I had a problem, I had multiple attacks and lost one cow, okay, is the post-traumatic stress to the mother cows. Now, I invite you, and I invite you, listen, and you want to see it? You come out with a German Shepherd, one of my brand next spring, and you put that dog on a leash, and if you make it to the other side of the corral, getting through them other cows, then you won't hear from me again. Now, I don't know how you measure the economic impact on that, but I've had cows, and I had to sell because I couldn't work them with my dogs, I couldn't have my kids, my friends' kids there, and work them with their dogs because they survived that attack. Now, again, I don't know how you measure the economic with that, and I appreciate that you read. that you're compensating, the word I'm looking for, for the sale value. I mean, that's smart, you know, but, you know, there's more to this. And nothing against you, called, you guys didn't show up for two days, tried to blame the dead calf on the magpie. You know, I'm not going to call anybody if I got wolves tearing into my calves. I see them on my call, but I'm not going to call you and hope that somebody comes up in a few hours or a few days. But anyway, I really appreciate you guys being here, and your comment of about to shoot, shovel, and shut up, just adding fuel in the wrong place, really struck home to me, and I want to thank all of you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing that, and you're absolutely right, there are, on the direct loss side, that does not begin to cover the reality of what is going on in terms of impact on livestock. I fully agree with you. And that is why in the pilot program, and it is still outlined in our current program, our third prong is indirect loss, or pay for presence. And that, that component acknowledges that we're not going to be able to find every animal, especially if you're out on open range, and you get your calf, you get your animals back, and you're short, or, like you said, the stress that's on animals. And it is very, it's very hard to measure. It's a very difficult thing to do, and we don't have the funds or the time to have a study for each, each group. So, that is why we do have a third prong. At this time, because we do not have the large pot of money that we had initially, we have not opened up that third prong for compensation. When, if we can get additional funds for it, the way that it's outlined right now, is that if we have information that there's wolves in your area, if there's a wolf pack there, if you are in the core range versus the greater range, you can be paid, again, completely voluntary, if you apply and sign up for it, 2% to 3% of the fair market value per head of livestock, per grazing season. So, that is the way that we work that out right now. It is not active right now, and that is because we have, again, a limited amount of funds, and we wanted to prioritize the losses, the confirmed direct losses. If we can get additional funds to pay for presence, or the indirect impacts that wolves have, are definitely the next priority, one of the next priorities that we want to be able to fund and offer to the public.
Just real quick, it's my understanding that some of that funding also would cover the fencing and things like that, correct? Okay, okay.
So, on the compensation program, California Farm Bureau, California Cattlemen's, and the Rural Counties Association, worked long and hard with the department and with the legislature. And as Mike talked about, the importance of having our messaging, something that will bring the middle-of-the-road individual from Marin County onto our side. This compensation program was the same thing. We, we had to work and get the messaging to the legislature to get the initial $3 million for the pilot program. Last year, it was going to be zeroed. We worked real hard to get $600,000, which is nowhere near enough. And it is an ongoing battle, but that is what your local producer organizations, Farm Bureau and Cattlemen's, and as a county, what our Rural Counties Association is doing out there for you.
All right. Real quick before, just touching on this issue, Mike provided me a bunch of slides, there's like 35 pages here, it's a super easy read. It was a study done by UC Davis, just on the very topic you were discussing, on the impact on the ranchers and the cattle. So, if you want that, in the back of the room, there was a table back there with a clipboard to put your name, email, and we'll email this whole packet to you. Thirty-five pages, it was just too much to try to print out tonight. So, if anybody's interested, I'll be glad to get it to them. So, all right. Okay, come on up. Scott's going to go first, and then we'll have you go right after him.
I appreciate everybody coming here. I'm going to talk to these biologists, from my perspective as a houndsman, the guy that hunts with dogs. My name is Scott Ward. We've got three apex predators, which you guys are not, which the department, not you guys, the department's not effectively managing, wolves, lions, and the bears, right? We can't run a trailing dog, a dog that barks on track, fox, coon, rabbit, squirrel, getting to find a wounded deer. In wolf country, because a wolf here is a strange dog, and its country's going to kill that dog. So, that really restricts us. That's an unintended consequence. Besides the easy prey, which is the livestock, which everybody here is suffering from, we're having a diminished deer herd here, and we're on the coast of Black Tail. Can't hunt bear with dogs, can't meet your quota, bear populations increase by 400%, bear eat a lot of fawns. Bear take lion kills, makes lion kill another one. Wolves take lion kills, wolves will feed on a bear kill. So, it's this unintended consequence of this protection of these apex predators that hurts me as a hunter, it hurts the livestock owners, and there's got to be some way to get, for you to relay what I'm telling you, and what these folks are telling you, the head of the department, to maybe get some action. That's it.
Archie Osborne from Surprise Valley. Hypothetically, what if I, what if I killed a wolf that was going after my cattle?
The question was hypothetically, what would happen if the gentleman were to kill a wolf while it was going after his cattle? I can only speak from the state's side in terms of the fact that, under the California Endangered Species Act, which the California Fish and Game Commission listed wolves as an endangered species under that act, it is illegal to take an endangered species in California. Now, take is defined as harass, pursue, hunt, or to do so with the intent to do so. So, even if you don't take the animal, but you're trying to. So, in that regard, yes, it would be, it would be a violation of take, it would be an illegal action. At this current stand, at this current period of how the wolves are listed in the state, there is, you aren't allowed to harass or take them, so you wouldn't be able to kill them. I can't speak to the law enforcement side of it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to the law enforcement side of that, because I'm not on the law enforcement side, so I do apologize. I know that our assistant chief has been in contact with Tex, and we can definitely get the answer to that right away to you guys, so.
So, I'm not law enforcement, and I'm not an attorney, but I will remind you all of the dryland wheat farmer in Kern County about 30 years ago that accidentally disced a listed kangaroo rat. He spent time in prison. So, just keep that in perspective. If that's what they will do, if you accidentally disced a kangaroo rat in your grain field, what the California Fish and Game, excuse me, Fish and Wildlife now, it was Fish and Game back then.
Can I answer that question?
So, I'm going to tell you that I will, our deputies will not investigate that, that's not what we do. But I want you to be aware, I can only, we can provide little protection from what the state's going to come. So, on that note, like I said, our department won't be investigating that. And I, we obviously understand the issue here locally, correct? We all understand the losses. I just explained my fear on the public safety side as well. And, but again, I think you all know about an incident that occurred down in the Aiden area not too many years ago, and it cost them, those folks, a lot of money to defend themselves. And so, just be smart about it, you know? And we have to, yeah, I totally agree. I totally agree. If, if I'm on my place, and I'm seeing one of my livestock being attacked by any type of predator, whatever that may be, I'm going to have a hard time standing by and watching it happen, right? You know, we had, I had a conversation with a couple of these folks earlier, you know, what's this going to look like? Again, to Mike's point, what is this going to look like when one of these predators is attacking our horses, our colts, our dogs? I don't care, I don't care what side of the fence you're on, if you support having the wolves in our ecosystem, I don't care about that. But I got to believe those very same people that don't, that want to have the wolves here would feel much the same, and that's the message we have to get out there. If that wolf was attacking their dog, or their cat, or their pet, how are they going to feel? What are they going to do? And that's kind of where we need to go with this. They need to realize that it could happen to them. Are they going to stand by to watch one of these predators tear their dog, tear their cat apart, their goat, whatever the case may be, it doesn't matter. Who can do that? We can't. This is, this is our livelihood, this is our livestock. I feel, we should have a right to protect our livestock. Unfortunately, we're not there at the state level, but the legislators, we're working with them to try to get a change there, okay? The state is going to come in and investigate it. Fish and Wildlife.
There's a whole bunch of things to talk about here, I've been writing notes, but on that one, where it did happen, where you could, we call, you used to call them Cotton Act rules, and that was under, to geek out on you a little bit, 10J in the Endangered Species Act, where wolves were reintroduced, they made 10J rules, so you could shoot a wolf that was caught in the act, that was Central Idaho, that was the Greater Yellowstone area outside the park, of course, Mexican Wolf Program, and now, the latest one, Colorado too. Unfortunately, we don't have that hereby, both state and federal. I think it would be state and/or federal agents that would investigate that kind of a thing. It's, and I get it, you know, my dog, I bring my, I've always brought my dogs into the field with me. When you're doing wolf work, it's kind of crazy, so I have to do, go about my business in a way that, to keep my dog safe. What would I do if the wolves were attacking my dog? I don't know, but, you know, obviously, I'd try to defend her in some way. And there have been some close instances. While the world might seem crazy along these lines, to, I guess, hopefully show that it's not completely crazy, you can, of course, kill a wolf to protect human safety. If for some reason, a wolf was going after a person, which is a super rare thing, you, obviously, you can and should protect a human being.
I have a few questions here. Who's the person that signed off on this whole wolf deal to let it begin in this state? How much does it cost for each frickin' collar you put on them? And how much you paying the guys to frickin' chase them around? And I want to subpoena the California Fish and Games books for all the frickin', all the frickin' lions and bears and wolves they've been dragging up here and transplanting up here, that are problems for the yuppie bastards in Tahoe. Fair enough? I do, I want to subpoena them the books for 20 years and see where they're transplanting them up here. I've been here 50-plus years, and we never had bears, we never seldom heard of a lion in this country. And I've got proof, you guys have been hauling your problems up here and dumping them, and we're sick of the bullshit.
Public Records Act, of course, those, yeah, Public Records Act, that's how you go through that? So, that is public information, all of it.
I'm Valerie Indicott, I live in Lookout, and I have a couple of quick questions. One of my questions is, you guys are talking about the amount, the number of wolves, you had touched on, we don't know how many are here, or what the number is. And then, you also touched on reporting kills. But what about reporting sightings, and how are you, because I can guarantee you, I mean, I live just outside of Lookout, I've had them cross the road in front of me, they're there. I've seen them, their tracks right down my house. I have a very, very, very small herd of cattle. If I lose one, it hurts. And I want to know, how do you, how, who's going to determine what that number is? And also, do those of us that see them, do we report those? Because how are you going to know where they are if we're not reporting them? And who do we report them to?
People that know me will even just call me, sometimes I get emails. We have a public on the wolf webpage. If you just Google CDFW wolf, it'll be the first thing that comes up. There is an electronic recording thing there that you could fill out. That is obviously a really big tool. Even for me, I'm used to working in very large places. Northern California is mind-boggling large, and those reports are a tool, that's how we have a sense of what's going on. I would say, for instance, a Harvey pack, that started with wolves, a couple of wolves visiting his boneyard, and, you know, and they shared that with me. That was about February last year, the year before, sorry. And it took a whole process to understand what was going on with a 400-square-mile home range. Yep, we got a couple of wolves traveling here in the winter, or in the summertime. Yep, oh, look at the trail cam at her belly, she's got pups somewhere, where are the pups? So, we know where to trap. And then, eventually, understanding how many pups there are, and getting a radio collar on them, which is an incredibly difficult thing to do in such a big area. I am very dedicated, I'm gone from home most of the time, six months or more of the year, living and working in woods, chasing wolves, trying to get counts, trying to get collars out. That particular case, Harvey pack, they get a text from me every single day on where the wolf locations are, to the best that we can give it. And usually, it looks something like this, I think this morning it was five miles out, or it could be 12 miles out. Whoa, they were on you last night. Whoop, they were on you last night. Oop, there's a cluster, you might have some for dead. I'll even share that screenshot with them. So at least as far as that stuff goes, and the way that I work stuff, and where's the gentleman that was talking about the mountain lions collaring? That's not how I do business at all. I would absolutely share all that info with you. We've had ranchers this past year come out on the helicopter captures, so they could just see what that whole thing even looks like. It's hard to picture it until you're actually there. And so, we work with folks as closely as possible. And actually, that's a pretty rewarding part of my job. Did I cover all that?
My name's Lawrence Cantrell. I've been since 12-years-old a houndsmen. And, I've seen the depletion of our game since five years ago, in this area, and all the areas around here. There's no elk, hardly. The mule deer is in private homes and altars. That's all, you know? And you can go on the surroundings, and there's nothing. But, another thing now, we have tags. Any fur-bearing mammal, reservation or rancheria, we can kill. That's a Pitt River tag coming from the US government, the BIA. So... huh? The BIA? We have fur-bearing mammal tags. A wolf is a fur-bearing mammal. We have those tags. A mountain lion is a fur-bearing animal. So, on a reservation or rancheria, these tags are legal. We've used them. I went to Sacramento, I used to be chairman of the Pitt River Tribe, probably 25-years ago. And, I got caught with deer meat. And so I went to the Bureau of Indian Affairs and got transportation tags. And on that transportation tag, it has "fur-bearing mammal." So, I have one out in my truck now. It's a green one. And so, you know, this would be a contest of what? If we seen one on the reservation, you shot him? That should stand up. So, you know, and so, you know, this is why I'm saying, if you, you know, these tags are just for the Indians on reservations. But, if it can be done there, there should be for protecting your game, your animals, your livestock. I mean, what do you do to a red-tailed hawk if he hits your chicken out there in the yard? You know? Price of eggs, I know what I'd do.
On the question of reporting, CDFW does have it on a website, a place where you can go to CDFW, go to the Gravel Page. You guys drill down a few pages, but there is a sighting entry place. Also, on Facebook, if you go on Facebook much, there's also a group called California Wolf Tracker. Primarily, it's, well, it's for all of California, also, western Nevada and southern Oregon are included. So, this was a template that was replicated from El Dorado County's mountain lion sightings map. Because there's a lot, there was debate between the data and the science, and the anecdotes from the citizens who lived there, about how many mountain lions are actually in El Dorado County, and where are they spending their time, and what are they doing? And so, some folks there put together this map, this tracker, where people could go onto Facebook, go into the group, and just say, hey, this street, or this Latin long, here's the pin, here's the picture, daytime, nighttime, interacting with animals, interacting with people, et cetera. And that has pulled together literally thousands of data points for El Dorado County alone, where people are seeing mountain lions. So I would encourage you, this group on Facebook, the California Wolf Tracker has just been launched. I would encourage you to join that group. And if you see a wolf walking across the street, take a picture and drop it in there. And that's gonna go to a Google Maps page that will be shared with the department. And will be publicly accessible, too. So, do that, like, do participate in this process to get this data collected. Visual evidence is always great, if it's just an observation, make it and share it there, so that more of this can be pulled together in one place, and it just doesn't get lost in conversations. Yeah, it's a group. Yeah, perfect, thank you. California Wolf Tracker, it's a group on Facebook.
Hi, everybody, my name's Jesse Holloway. I am a District 3 Commissioner on the Modoc County Fish Game and Recreation Board. And I have a question for Mr. Ken, Axel, Russell Turner, and Mike. Does our current game population, does it stand a chance against sustaining the predator population, especially with the incoming wolves? And all I want is a yes or no from you, or if I could. Yes, sir. Cut and dry, man, I don't wanna take up anybody else's time. We'll come back to you. Wait, wait, this is a yes or no, we'll come back to you. You, sir. Yes or no? With our current game population, the prey population that the apex predators, predators feed on, do we have a sustainable amount of game population for the predators to feed on in California? We'll come back to you.
So, a simple hint on this, a couple of years ago, X3B deer tag numbers were cut in half.
Okay, everybody, I'm gonna turn it over to, you're a USDA official, so this really isn't your realm, but I know that you put boots on the ground, and you're out there a lot. What is your opinion, Russ? Thank you. Okay. Appreciate the applause. Absolutely. Mike Costello, I've talked to you on the phone multiple times, it's great to put a face to the name. Can I get your opinion on the matter? Sure. I want to, with all respect to everybody, this is a yes or no. Let's get through this quick, right? Just for these four, I'd like to come back to you, too. You guys are representatives from the Fish and Game Department, Fish and Wildlife, and I would like an answer. No, you can give a yes or a no. I'm not finished yet. Please. Okay, with this being said, we're talking about ecosystems. When did the wolf become paramount to destroy an entire ecosystem? Where do we start and where do we stop with this? Environmentalist, everybody should be on the same page, we are looking at a genocide! It's maddening. And I'm sorry I'm taking up more time, but the transparency between the departments, there's three officials. There's a game warden in this room who's chosen not to represent this. How can there be any trust? Thank you, Tex.
Thank you. I am transparent, anybody that knows me knows I'm super transparent. Because it's more than a yes or no answer, in all fairness. And I will be happy, and that does not mean that I won't give an answer that you don't like. So, in all fairness, there is more to it, I think that you would be good with my answer. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody about it. But, that's all I have to say. So, I'd talk to anybody about that anytime.
Okay, so back when this all started, and we were having wolf meetings in Doris, California, filling a room like this in Doris because the wolves were just over the border, they were losing their first and third cuttings of alfalfa. Wiped out, these guys were getting wiped out. The elk were just crushing them. They had monumental chunks of elk flying through there. I haven't gotten an elk call in 10 years.
I think we all recognize, anybody who's lived here any length of time, you know, I've told this story many, many times. When I first moved here, 30-something years ago, down here in Likely, there were times where we'd have to stop on the highway to let the antelope cross the road. We haven't seen that forever. So we truly recognize, I think as a community, we recognize, we don't feel like the wildlife will support these predators, so...
Well, Ken, you sit here and tell everybody how transparent you are. Your middle name is lying. You've trespassed on my property more than once. We was out there hazing wolves, wolfwatch, range rider, whatever you wanna call it, you funny piece of crap. I am, that is respectful, Tex. Wolves came on my ranch last year and killed some calves. Come out, trapper came out when he got there, busy man. Video of wolves eating these little calves, two, three-day-old calf. Wolves were eating it, we didn't chase them away, we didn't shoot them, we should've. Hindsight's 20/20. Come out, yep, it looks like a confirmed kill. You get the pictures, 'cause all we got in an hour and a half was the neck bone from these two wolves devouring the whole calf. Nope, not a confirmed kill. Come back, three days later, another calf. We ended up with five calves. You know it, you've got the pictures, you know they're wolf kills. My range rider was out there, we've got videos of him, scat, DNA, all over the stuff. Denied. You say you're gonna be transparent and work with us, to this day, on December 24th, we had that replacement heifer killed by Gambi, potential some more. But then one day you call me and said, hey, I might be up in the area in the next couple of days. All of a sudden, one day I get a phone call, hey, you know, I am in your area. And it was kinda funny, we got you on four cameras before you even knew we knew you was there. You didn't have the balls to tell us. And you showed up on the ranch, we came in behind you with a side-by-side, next time I'll just plow into your pickup, so I got proof you're there. I was nice and let you go that day, 'cause you seemed like you could work with the guy. But on this heifer that got killed on December 24th, transparent, oh, I'm gonna help you get paid. Then your next comment was, well, you seem to be a guy that can find stuff on the internet, just look it up yourself. You're a gutless coward and won't help nobody. Axel, I don't know about you yet, I've heard some good and bad. I'd like to work with you, but Ken is not welcome on my ranch, or nowhere near me. He didn't even have the courtesy to tell the trapper that he was coming up here. So when he sits here and tells my neighbor about the mountain lions, I wanna be transparent and work with you. Why do you lie to everybody? And another gentleman was with me that day in the side-by-side that's in this room, one of my wolfwatchers. We have over 1,200 man-hours, not counting myself. 3,300 miles on a side-by-side, two hazier damn wolves away. You guys have paid zero dollars, you have offered to pay a bunch. You told us to get a drone and help drone them away, but you won't come and... Yes, you did, and there was three of us there that day on the phone when I was chewing you out. You know the day I'm talking about, buddy.
My name's Jimenez Proparra, and I'm just a concerned citizen and sportsman. Somebody addressed, somebody asked a question about the population of prey animals. And that was one of the questions that I wanted to ask. I also wanted to know, after listening to Aaron mention that meeting in Fortuna, where all of a sudden a plan, a few years later, or whatever, came up. Was there an environmental impact statement, environmental report, whatever the state calls it, done on the economic effects to counties like Modoc, which relies heavily on hunting? Was there anything done along those lines as to what happens with an increase in wolf predation on our game animals? I have not been able to find anything looking online. My wife contacted you the other day. We have not been able, she's better on the computer than I am. And, you know, I'm just wondering, was there anything done before OR7 ever crossed into the state of California? Knowing that they were in Idaho and had gotten into Oregon? And if there wasn't, why not?
And Ken, correct me if I'm, I might not know the history of, obviously, when wolves were coming in, and when the management plan was made. To address the gentleman's point, I did reply to your wife's email on that. And I did tell her that, 'cause I think she specifically asked if there was a NEPA plan done for the capture of wolves. And so if you're asking something different, I can get back to you on that. I think I got back to her and said that I would make sure to, you know, look into it and see if there actually was a physical document done. To my knowledge, when we do capture plans related to endangered species, we are following NEPA's guidelines and CISA guidelines. And so, we don't need to fill out an entire form, there is a review process for that internally. But I will, I can get back to you, 'cause I have the contact of your wife's email, and I can get back to you on that for you. So to my knowledge, I do not think that one was done, but I will get back to you since I have that contact. I just made note of the capture because that was the question that was in the email from your wife. So that's the only reason I mentioned that.
So with full transparency, my name is Jeff Tatro. I'm a retired CHP officer, my wife and I currently raise bison. Now, as I look out over the crowd, I'm gonna venture to guess the majority of you are cattle ranchers. Not bison, not sheep, maybe some sheep, no disrespect. I'm gonna get to my question to a couple of you individuals here in a minute, but I wanna ask for a raise of hands, but I know what I'm gonna say, or see. How many in this room chose the livelihood of ranching cattle, or sheep, or any other livestock, so that you could stand back and watch them get eaten and killed by predators that we can't do anything about? Do I need to see a raise of hands? Do you want a picture for lamalfa? So my question is, how many in here are in the business of raising livestock of any type, where your intention is not to have that product go on somebody's plate and be consumed, but to be devoured by a predator that's protected? Raise a hands, how many in here are in the business of putting that food on people's plates? Y'all are here for the business of feeding predators? I don't think so. So here's my question, I heard some very high-dollar figures thrown out, from several hundred thousand to a final $3 million from you, Axel, for compensation. So here's another question to the crowd, how many of you raise livestock so that you can be compensated by somebody for your losses? There you go. There's a big movement, I think somewhere way back on the East Coast, that's focused on cutting fraud and waste. Would the $3 million that you propose to pay back to those of us when we lose money, after we jump through all the hoops and fill out all the forms, and go through all the investigation and everything, would that money not be better spent on a proper management program? Where those of us, if you even trust us to take matters into our own hands at that appropriate time, and put those animals down when we see them actively killing our livelihood? Now, I said I raise bison. Wolves do go after bison, but I do know they will fight back. And I've been hoping, ever since we started raising them, that I would be able to make a phone call to Fish and Game and say, come get your... a phone call to Fish and Game and say, come get your dead mountain lion and you try to figure out which one of those animals killed it out there. So that's my question to you. How much would it cost to put a viable management program versus asking for more money that's coming out of all of our pockets just to reimburse for that calf that was killed?
Thank you for the question. Just to clarify the numbers, the $3 million was for the pilot program. That is money that was distributed 100% to people that applied across nine counties at the time. The $600,000 that we have now is our funds that were allocated to us to continue that program to compensate. I fully understand that not everyone, that people don't want, a lot of people don't want to be compensated. You don't want to say, yes, I'm taking money and because of that, I, that's fine. That's, you know, now, now we can all move on. Wolves are here, we're getting paid, it's fine. I understand that that is the sentiment of many people, particularly in this room. There are a lot of people that that could change, you know, you might change your minds on that. That's for you to decide. And that is fully within your right. From the Fish and Game side, from this, as Ned mentioned, it was to get that program in place was, Fish and Wildlife was part of that, but it was also Farm Bureau, Cattlemen's, there was a lot of, lot of other organizations that were pushing for that, that program to try to assist people because we know at a minimum, there is financial loss happening and going to continue to happen. So yes, does it fix everything? No, it doesn't. It is there and we are happy to help facilitate that. What would it cost to create a management program, in your words, that would be effective in that regard? I, or I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you're talking about some sort of lethal removal of wolves, what would it take? Again, we can, I can only speak to what the current laws are in the state. And that is what Fish and Game is bound by, what Fish and Wildlife is bound by, is trying to work and help mitigate the issues that are currently at hand with the current laws that we have. I can't speak beyond that. If there, if there is sentiment in the state to want to change that, that is going to have to come from the Fish and Game Commission that then mandates that to Fish and Wildlife and changes the laws that are on hand. I am sorry that I do not have a better answer on that, but that is all that I can do in my capacity in this job. And from the limited stuff that I can do, I do want to help. And so if there are folks where compensation can help you, I am there to help you and assist you. And to some of the people that have mentioned that they need assistance with that, I am available full time to assist with that. And I'm sorry that I don't have a better answer.
I don't know which direction to head because I think there are more people on this side, so I'm going to talk to these people out there. I'm Larry Quigley and I've, for the last 70 years, so I'm quite a bit older than 70, I have always raised sheep and cattle together. And there's enough people in this room that are concerned, you know, concerned about the predators. And right now, we have an immense coyote problem. Sheep are about the most defenseless, dumbest animals I've ever seen in my life, but they don't want to protect themselves. And I, I've had out there on a ranch on Road 75, I got so old and decrepit and I couldn't run the ranch anymore and keep up with the irrigating and the cattle. So I got rid of the cattle, but the last couple of years out there, I had the coyotes kill a calf. And there was a pack of coyotes, six or seven, and they had the cow over there running around in circles, circling the cow. And a couple of other coyotes went over and killed the calf before I could get out there to get something done about it. But there, we were allowed to go ahead. I went out with my rifle and I got a couple of the coyotes and we had the government trapper coming out there and continually doing the infrared hunting at night, snares and different trapping. But that's a continual basis and you still got coyote problems. I, I had some of the people down the road on Road 76 said, dang you, Quig, how come you left over there on 75 and took your sheep with you? Now the coyotes already moved over to their place and, and killing their sheep. For two years out there at the last, I only had 25 or 30 ewes. I never got one lamb raised. The coyotes ate them all. But anyway, these wolves scare the hell out of me because I'm in the sheep business now. I bought a little place in town and running some pure bred sheep. But as far as the hunting goes, I got to back up. I was hunting up here when I was 13, 14 years old and we had thousands of deer. I literally mean thousands of deer. We had a cattle ranch out in Mud Lake area. I went out there in the last of November, first part of December, had an old Jeep pickup set up way high, was pushing about a foot of snow just before, when I got in and when Tex talked about their antelope crossing the highway, there was literally hundreds of deer. I'd have to stop and wait for crossing the road that migrated in from Oregon. And when I got to Mud Lake, it had been freezing really hard. And I estimated, and I know I didn't miss it very far, 2,000 head of deer pawing at the ice. Now, our Fish and Game managed them so well, you all know, when you drive someplace, you can drive Klamath Falls and back, the winter rains for the deer and not even see a deer, not even an old doe. And I got one more friend that's older than I am. He was lucky and you know if you try to draw a deer tag, how fortunate you have to be to draw a deer tag. He drew X2. He was too old to hunt by himself. I volunteered to go out and I know quite a bit of the area. We hunted seven of the last 10 days in X2 where he drew his tag. We couldn't find one doe track. So that's your Fish and Wildlife managing things.
Hi, my name is Hunter and I have a question. Do wolves kill people and children? Because if they kill cows and calves, we could replace them, but if they kill us, you, you guys, we can't replace us.
I'm Deborah Cockrell, a rancher from Surprise Valley. I got two questions. Robert, for you. Did, arrest, sorry. Did they take away the flying for coyotes in, in Modoc County? Yeah. With the lakes full in Surprise Valley, it's held the coyotes inland. And along with the coyotes and the ravens, it is hell cabbie. But my second question is, and this gets to the wolf point. We know the wolves came through a couple of years ago, understood maybe last year too in Surprise Valley. For some reason, we are seeing really big coyotes. Do they cross with each other? Anyone? I think they do. With the size of the coyotes that we are seeing, I think they do. I think they did. They don't, okay.
Just with the information we know genetically and, you know, being able to look at the wolves that are here as well, and that's done through our wildlife forensics team on the law enforcement side, we do know that the eastern wolf, the red wolf, is a lot more closely related to coyotes. And so you do get coyote crosses in the eastern US and up into Canada and that part. And then the Great Lakes, there is a lot more closer genetic relatedness. So you can get more DNA crossing like that. But we have not seen that in California or in the West so far. And I can just speak to what, what we know on that side.
And the eastern, the eastern stuff, that occurred hundreds of years ago, so.
Okay, so my next question is, for a lot of us ranchers that think they have crossed and we were to kill those, what, what is, is there any? It's a coyote? It's a coyote kill? Is that true? What are the consequences, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if there happened to be something that wasn't pure wolf, technically, within the Fish and Game Code, anything that's a hybrid, a wolf hybrid, so one generation, if it's what we call an F1 hybrid, which means that it's mated with a dog and beyond that, is not wildlife. And so that's where if you have hybrid, you know, dogs that are breeding with wolves, we, we don't classify them as wildlife and they are treated domestically. And so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a felony on that side. Yeah, and that'd be the same on the federal side, from the state and the federal side.
Rick Roberti from Sierra Valley, Loyalty's my hometown. And there was nothing else on TV tonight. So when I heard I could come to Modoc County to this, that's where we're going. And thanks for not letting me down. You never do. We don't have a wolf issue. We got a governor issue. If we, if we, if we could somehow get him out of there and get the right appointments in, we wouldn't have to be talking with these guys because these guys aren't the guys that really are our problem. It's a lot higher up and that's where we got to go. This is a real emotional issue. And as president of the California Cattlemen's Association, we've been working on this for 10 years. This isn't something new. This is something that we've probably spent more time on this issue than any other issue and is the most frustrating issue because it's very emotional. We got people on both sides, but it's a legal issue. So we got to temper our emotions sometime and go legally after this. And my question's going to be Nate, or not Axel, I worked with the wrong wolf guy, was Axel is, we're waiting for the right time. CCA is ready to file suit as soon as we can, but I go to all these meetings, we never find out exactly when something's going to change with the management plan. So my, what I'm going to say is, Axel, when can we finally get some breakthrough on this? Because the sad thing is, we've got people getting beat up. We got people getting destroyed. I don't have answers anymore for my neighbor that calls me and said, I just lost another calf, or I just lost another cow. We're not talking, we're talking about a piece of paper that is ruining some lives out there, literally. So we need to know right now when we can stop this torment of our friends and our families and the people in our industry because we know it's not right. You know it's not right. So give us a little hope when we can see, see a change, Axel.
Rick, I assume that you're referring to, at least, let's just talk about the fact that with the current management plan that we have, which is what we have to work off of at the moment, is that we have at least right now, three phases of wolf recovery. And those phases are met by different criteria of how many breeding pairs are in the state. I might've mentioned earlier that we've had at least four breeding pairs for the last two consecutive years, which would mean that we are in phase two. Phase two, I'll be honest, does not have a lot of teeth to it. One thing that is discussed in there, the one thing that's concrete that says that the agency will do is to do a review of status, a status review of the species. Because they're an endangered species, to review the status is to say, do they, are they still endangered? Are there enough? Are there still threats on the landscape that would deem them to be endangered? And then that we would report that to the commission. So that is something that we are going to start working on this year, is that status review. Some of the other things that are talked about in phase two are injurious harassment. It does also talk about the potential for lethal take of wolves, but with the stipulation that again, federal and state laws allow for that. And so that is where within the management plan, we are, we continue to, I don't want to say stuck, but we are in phase two until we have six breeding pairs for two consecutive years, which gets us, gets us into phase three. And then phase three talks about the potential for delisting from there. So that means that we have a minimum of two to four years in that period to talk about or to look at what delisting looks like. In that status review, it is my hope that we will be able to get delisting criteria. And I'm talking about delisting because whether you like wolves, you don't like wolves, ideally you would like them to be not endangered, to be delisted in that way. And so that is why it is a goal of the departments to, to look at what recovery criteria are, which were never listed in the original plan. And so that is why I think when Erin asked or mentioned earlier, when she said, where are we going? What is the, what is the goal? That was never outlined in the management plan. And so in this phase that we're in now, that is what will allow us to figure out, what is that number? What does it look like from California's Endangered Species Act to say that wolves are stable within California and be able to allow different management tools to be used for producers on the ground that are affected by the presence of wolves?
So, so sir, sir, we, we, we have a process of, you can come up and get on the microphone where everybody can hear you. There are several people in the queue right now. But Axel, I would like to follow up and I want to put words in Rick's mouth. Appreciate delineations on the different phases of the current management plan, but also heard Mike earlier talking, and I believe this is where Rick's question actually was, was at what point do we start reviewing the 10-year-old current management plan?
Yeah, so I will agree. The management plan was written 2015, you know, before we, actually during the time in which the first wolf pack had come to California. So when you, if you have read that document or you do read that document, it is very speculative. It's talking about the future. There's a lot of if and when. It doesn't talk about, it doesn't speak in a way of what the current situation is. So there's a couple of ways of thinking about this. We, a lot of people have proposed rewriting the management plan. It was my hope coming into this position to be able to at least modernize it in some way. What I have been told by my leadership is that it will be, because to create a document like that is going to take years, even if it's just a review. And so there is one form of thinking that it is faster to trudge through the way that the management plan is written right now, under what we have, continue with the status and add amendments to the management plan such as the status review, such as a recovery plan and recovery criteria than to totally rewrite, rewrite the plan. And I'm just being honest with you, the size of our agency, the amount of bureaucracy that there is in play to go and say, we're going to rewrite the plan, is potentially going to set us back even further if that is your goal to get towards delisting. I'm sorry, that's, yeah, that's what I know from my leadership on my side.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Washo and I am another one of the local houndsmen. I've had hounds for about 30 years in the state of California. So a lot of people have already touched on some things that I wanted to talk about, so I'm not going to touch on those. I just wanted to talk for a minute to the fishing, and this is not necessarily about wolves. It is, I don't know how often you talk to check bonum, but it is time to bring dogs back to California. There have been several scientific studies lately that have shown that both the use of dogs for hunting and the use of dogs in the hazing are effective for changing the behavior of predators and maybe allowing us at times to do non-lethal and, and lethal management that's effective and can hopefully work on something different because part of my whole thing is that I really like bears and lions and I hunt them, I really like, but I really like them and I realize that wolves have a place here too. But the way that things are going right now is, it's untenable. Like it's not good for animals, it's not good for people. Like, it's not good for animals, it's not good for people. Wolves get poisoned, wolves get killed. We have countless mountain lions and bears being killed every year because of the three strikes, is just, people cannot live with that. And so, they're being killed, and nobody's saying anything, there's no data on it, they're just dumped, and like, it's not, it's, just, it's, it can't go on like that. And when we look at the paper, like, you know, we have Mountain Lion Foundation, or Tahoe Bear League, or all these people say everything's, oh, just great, look at, look at the, look at the documentation from this, we have three depredations. But that's not true. Meanwhile, there is a bunch of animals that got killed, and nobody ever says a word, and that's not, it's not right. It needs to change. And the only reason that it's like that is because of the way that the laws are right now. So I just, I just think that's something that, that just really needs to change and be looked at. I'm a terrible public speaker, so. And also, I'm the one that's doing the Wolf Tracker page, so you can, if you wanna find the Wolf Tracker page. And, I just, we just, something has to change in the system, it just can't, it can't continue like this. And I'd also like to say, as a houndsman, for 30 years, I've realized the importance of genetics over those years. And the genetics of these wolves are almost directly, all go back to the Inaha pack, which is like the primary depredation-causing pack in Oregon. And I don't really understand why we can't consider genetics when we're considering these wolves, because there are wolves that don't cause problems, there's wolves that people don't even see. And then there's the wolves that do. And I don't understand why we can't start considering genetics and possibly some lethal removal, and allowing the wolves that are not causing issues to stay in the background and do their thing. And also just, another, I just wanted to say, we had wolves here, they did not figure very, very prominently in our tribal cosmology, because there were not a lot of wolves here. And so I'm wondering at this point now, are we gonna stuff an unhistoric amount of wolves on this land just because we don't have a lot of people here? Or are we gonna do what the land has always wanted, and have the historic number of wolves, which seems like that is, it says like, we're gonna have 900 wolves in Northern California, and 600 possibly in the Modoc area? Like, that's not what was here historically, so.
Yeah, I felt compelled to speak a little bit about messaging, right? And so, everybody here knows about the economic impacts. Everybody knows what it's like to be out on a cold morning, taking care of a calf, and happen across a bloody mess, right? That's not the message that the people who voted this stuff in, what's gonna win them over, right? So Modoc is, is great at leading the way. With the wild horse issue, we led the way, we made history. With COVID, we led the way, right? We opened up doors. Modoc has that capability. But, we need to get together and come up with those messages. We heard a lot of that tonight. When a wolf is eating a cow, they're outstripping the carrying capacity. We just, we just facilitated their survival beyond what the deer herd can, can sustain. That's the message those voters, those, those people who put these laws into place need to hear. They don't wanna hear about your economic loss, that's not gonna win them over. We can tell that story to each other all we want, but when we go out to, to that voting public, we need to go with the messages that are gonna get them to vote different, right? So, I think that we're gonna convene with a group, I think the Modoc Fish and Rec Council is a good place to start with that. We need our own management plan, we need our own messaging, right? And we need to go to the state and say, "This is what we're gonna do." So we're here to help with that, but think about what is gonna change their minds, and then share that story.
I'm Reed Gardner from up there at Davis Creek. My family's been here for 110 years in the same place. We've always done whatever we could to try to get, to feed the wildlife, to make sure that they have the salt, the everything. I'm sure a lot of you, the older people who've been here, have gone through our places 30 years ago, and it wasn't uncommon to see 300 antelope on us. This year, we had nine. I was fortunate, I got, I drew X3B tags this year. Out of, on a 5,400 acre ranch, I saw three deer. Last spring, I had a game camera out, and in two-week period, I had nine bears. We can't even get the Fish and Game Commission to get a bear zone, a bear hunt up in this area. So how are we going to be able to get anything done on a wolf? That we have absolutely no, every, every time we go to, we meet one criteria, they're going to change it on us, unless it is written in paper that when we reach that criteria, it, it kicks in. Every time, and it's not just your agencies, it's the Forest Service, it's the BLM, we've always had these lines, it's like, "Oh, well, we'll just, when you meet this line." Well, then you meet this line, all of a sudden, the line gets moved to another. And we have to have it in writing, so we know what the benchmarks are that we can meet. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gary Riley. I grew up in El Tres. When I was a young boy, my dad would take me deer hunting every year. It used to be, you'd pay three, four dollars at the hardware store for your deer tag. There would be thousands of deer, you'd see great big bucks going through town all the time. Now you gotta put in for a draw, wait maybe five, six years if you're lucky. Back when you could run dogs, mountain lions weren't a problem. Now all you see is deer in town. If you saw a deer in town when I was a boy, it was, write it in paper, get a picture, and it was major news. Not anymore. And the bear problem. I was running dogs for bears down out of Sacramento. And you could go camping in the woods, wasn't a problem, they were afraid of us. Now they're not. Anyway, thank you.
Hi, my name's Cherie, and I, probably one of the few people here that I actually like wolves. However, I also have livestock, and I'm realistic. And, how does it make any sense to not be able to haze an animal off a predator, shoot it while it's in the act of killing your animal? What is, what is that doing? That is training that predator, that there are no consequences for preying on your livestock in the moment. You're actually training that animal, you're, you're reinforcing that behavior in that, in that animal. And, how does that do, that does a disservice to us with our livestock, and it also does a disservice to that predator. Because that predator's going to continue that behavior, because, hey, I can, I can kill this cow, and they're not gonna do anything. And it also causes that predator to lose its fear of humans. And, I fully believe in keeping predators, they need to be wild, they need to fear humans, they need to know that there are consequences if they're gonna be preying on livestock. And, also not having enough wild prey anymore is gonna cause them to continuously feed on livestock, so policies definitely need to, need to change. And, I do think there's a place for a few of them, but if you guys are planning on reaching like 400, that's, that's way too many. I mean, that's, it doesn't take a scientist to, to see the, you know, the lack of logic in, in that. And also, I, as a person who, I camp and ride alone, hike alone, I ride my horse alone up in the mountains. Where, where is the line drawn when I feel like my life is threatened? If I'm approached by, if I get surrounded by those four or five wolves and I'm up there alone, am I gonna go to prison if I feel like my life is in danger and I shoot one of them because they're not backing down when they're coming towards me and my horse and my dogs? So, where, where's, where's that line? You know, I don't wanna go to jail, but I also don't wanna die.
So I can address that question, and that was answered earlier. Obviously, if you feel threatened by one of these predators, you have every right to protect yourself. You have every right to protect yourself.
My name is Rochelle Ratliff from Lakely, California, and I have a question for everyone here. Who here wants to see a healthy elk and deer population in the mountains? Do you guys wanna see a healthy elk and deer population? Do we have sustainable elk and deer population to feed these wolves? Do we? Oh, you couldn't answer that. So, here's my question. If we wanna see this, but obviously we don't have the prey population to sustain these wolves, would you not consider that negligence to release these wolves in a place where we cannot sustain them? And if you can't, and your agency's not big enough to take care of these problems, there's a lot of people here who can for you. So if you can't, step out of the way and let us do it for you, because we do know.
I'm Helen Alva, we ranch in Aiden, and this is kind of a, to go along with what she had to say, and a question that was asked earlier, about whether or not California had a natural food source to sustain these type of wolves. And I asked this very same question at the Big Valley Fall River Catlament Summer Meeting in Hat Creek to Kit. And you know what he told me? Point Lake, no hesitation, no. Tonight, he couldn't answer that question. So, anyway, we, I think we all know in this room, California doesn't have the food sources to sustain these type of wolves. And why are we going through all these ridiculous phases and protocols and this and that, and wanting, and, you know, them to promote this program that they can't survive here with a natural food source? How fair is that to the wolves? You know, it's not.
Okay, I'll try to clear some things up here. But this is how I would say it. I told you all that, I'm not from here, I'm new to California, I worked in Idaho, Montana, Arizona, New Mexico. I'm from Wisconsin originally, grew up hunting, fishing, camping. It's also why I talk a little bit funny. But, the thing is, here, compared to all the other wolf states I've been, some windshield biology here, if you will, everywhere I work, I see low game numbers, for sure, compared to Montana, Idaho, Arizona, New Mexico. If you've ever been down there, holy cow, do they have elk down there. It's amazing. But that's what I see. I, I don't see deer very often, I don't see sign compared to these other areas. I, on the trail cams, whatever, all of our tools. And so, and what I do see, different than those other places, is it seems like there's a lot of bears, even compared to Montana, it seems like there's a lot of lions. Therefore, and what I tell everybody, is that here does seem like it's a completely different ecological scenario. And, and we should figure that part out. Not, not, not just, not just, you know, you know, my sense of things out there, but let's really see to what to agree, all of that is true. Now, as you guys all know, the, again, the way that the rules are, and laws are made up, not anything that we do, we don't make these rules and laws up, that part becomes really difficult to do. I'm not telling you anything you don't know right now. So, that's a scenario, I see it. How is that gonna affect wolves? I imagine, I said almost from day one, the first year, that I see probably wolves, for instance, are going to have very large home ranges, and they're going to exist in smaller pack sizes. They can't do it any different than that. The one caveat out there, or the one interesting thing, just like lots of other places in the West, is, you know, obviously wolves are subsidized by livestock. Whether they're killing them or scavenging them, they get a bump from that. What does that mean in the end, in the, in the whole big picture of things? I see all of that stuff. So, larger home ranges, smaller pack sizes, that means lower density, they can't operate, unless because of the presence of livestock out there. Unfortunately, does that boost them to, they can have a little bit more pack sizes, you know, and then that also tails right into reproduction, that's a boost to reproduction. And then reproduction, of course, and, and higher survival of pups, which become dispersers, which have the potential to become those new packs out there. To be clear, I know a lot of people maybe won't believe this, we did not reintroduce wolves here. Wolves are very good at coming, they can go thousands of miles when they disperse. And so I see all of that, you know, is it sustainable? Is, to me, that answer's a lot more complicated than that. But when I tell you this, you, I hopefully, hopefully you see that I see, I get it, I see all that stuff out there. And that's just as a new guy. Well, it's not my job to do anything about it. My job is, I know, I, to do everything that we know about wolves, you have to know that part, that's my job. My job also is to, to the extent possible, help people on the landscape to deter conflict to the extent possible, which is very difficult, even on a good day. You can't shut depredations off, but through communication and coordination, maybe we can have conversations, if you live in a pack area, "Hey, I have some ideas." And then you might be like, "No, that won't work for us." "Okay, I have some other ideas, maybe we'll come up with something together, like, try this." At the end of the day, we won't know if we're successful, right? "Oh, you haven't had any depredations this year. Is it because wolves weren't a problem that year, or because the thing that we were doing worked?" So, I, I, I hope that cleared some things up. And again, I'm happy to talk to anybody about any of this stuff, anytime, whether it's tonight, or in the weeks to come.
Hey, guys, I appreciate you all being here. We're pushing 8:30, I know everybody's tired, everybody's getting frustrated. Hey, one thing I wanna say, we, I think we need to talk about, I think we, we discussed this early on tonight. We need to get to our legislators, we need to make some change. It's disturbing to me to find out that, and again, it's not what these guys do, it's the policymakers, the people that wrote this plan. It's disturbing to me that it feels like there is no end to this plan. We need to, we need to get our Fish and Game Commission in check, we need to figure out how we're gonna do that, and that's gonna be done through our legislators. We have to have some real, real change, but it's only gonna come through our legislators. And, just like Mike was saying, there's, there's a message. We can work with Mike and his folks and, and get that message out, and, and we need to have some more of these meetings. I know Ned and I will have some discussion on, on putting a group together so that we can start pushing this, because we have to get this fixed. Right now, and no offense, Kent, the, Kent, the thing right now, we all know that these wolves and, and some of these lions are feeding on your cattle, your livestock. They're not feeding on, on the wildlife out there because we don't have it. We all recognize we don't have that. That's a problem. We have to get that back in balance. Part of that is going through our legislators to make that happen. Hold some people accountable.
So, I, I would just like to thank Kent and Axel for coming up. I know, I know it wasn't an easy place to walk into, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Mike, for making the long trip up with the information that you had for us, and look forward to working with you. Thank you, Erin. And, at this point, we're, we're going to close. We're, we're wrapped up, you can have individual conversations with, thank you. You can have individual conversations with, thank you.